6:32, I will call the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School Committee to order on September 9. Renee, can we have a roll call?
Steve Owen.
Here.
Jean Fox.
Here.
Sherri Baron.
Here.
Jennifer Blum.
Here.
Robert Clark. Laura Ramsden.
Here.
Will Stankwitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Seeing we took care of number two already in the executive session, I'll move on to item number three, public participation. Anybody for public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, acceptance of minutes of August 26. I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes. I have a motion and a second. This is... Yes, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? The second item, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the executive session that was on August 26. I have a motion. I have a second by Ms. Ramsden. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion is unanimous. Item number five, presentation to the school committee. 6A, under all business FY20 budget status report?
As an update to the prior school committee meeting, we will have a kickoff call with our auditors next week to begin the E&amp;D certification process and the annual 2020 audit. We closed the year with $1,575,187 in our E&amp;D account. Included in the FY20 expenditures were coronavirus-type expenditures of approximately $581,000 for larger ticket items, $100,000 was for the first three-month supply of PP&amp;E, and about $481,000 spent for Chromebooks. I am currently working through the best methodologies to recapture funding from available sources. We do have, through the CARES Act, a total of $635,850 available through Freetown and Lakeville, which is the grant that covers the $225 per student. The period of this grant is from March 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. Rick and I are in the process of trying to schedule a meeting with the towns to determine if they have any additional available CARES Act or COVID relief funding that can assist us. There is a pretty extensive list of allowable costs that can be covered under this grant, and the timing of the funding allows us to either utilize FY20 or FY21 expenditures up until the time period of 12/31/2020. That concludes my FY20 update at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Lee's on the FY20?
The only thing that I would ask Mr. Maderas as we look at any future needs of Chromebook technology, I know we're doing, we have coverage for 4 to 12, and we have the coverage of the teachers and the staff, so if there's an opportunity to expand upon that using the CARES fund, I'd like to take a look at that, especially with the lead time of getting Chromebooks.
So, Mr. Owen, you had pointed out in our tours today with a couple of the board members, so you're referencing the fact we've already secured or are in the process of securing four, grades four and five, but the need K to 3 at our two elementary schools to potentially secure additional devices to meet the growing remote learning needs of that population, which we had not identified. And we certainly can look at that in that comprehensive list. I think, as pleased as I think we all are relative to the potential for certification of E&amp;D, I think candidly, we've also realized the reality, even with available monies this year, that the additional costs that we're going to incur in expenses may negate that as the year plays out. But CARE has already started a process, a pretty detailed process, to make sure that that's analyzed and we take a look at that. But we absolutely will look at additional technology, devices, and supports for the two elementary schools that were not included in our original proposals.
Right, and if I may, when I first brought that up, and thank you for reminding me, it wasn't for everybody. It was just to augment the capacity so that if more and more have to be remotes, they're not taking away from what's in the building.
Yeah, so just from a community perspective and certainly for the board members' information, so when we ultimately receive those devices in grades four and five, we will then have outfitted all of our students, grades four through 12, with devices. It will leave about 50% of our devices for the remaining K to 3 right now. In other words, our current group that remains. So we could potentially look at supporting that in addition to those devices being a little bit older. But I recognize, I didn't mind, and that's not what Mrs. Fox had said, we weren't suggesting that we needed a one-to-one device, K1 and 2 and 3, but it would be certainly something we need to look at in the classroom to provide some additional devices relative to our hybrid model, but also just the long-term impact on remote learning.
Yeah, and even just the plan ahead model, right? So even if we order them today, it doesn't mean they're going to be here next week. So there's already going to be some devices that may have to come out of service in the next year. We should start to plan ahead of that aspect of it. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Lee's?
Ms. Lee's, the two buses that we have, where would that money be coming from?
Yes, so that would be monies that we are projecting to be expended for FY21. And so depending on how we utilize the CARES money, we may or may not be able to fund with what we currently have. However, we still have discussions that we're hoping to have with the towns. So we're trying to determine really how much funding we do have. Right now for FY21, and I don't know if you want me to save it for my FY21 report, but we've locked in a total of $985,000 of grant funding that could relate to COVID-related items. So it really depends on our strategy of how we want to use those monies. But we also might have other additional monies available from the towns. We are looking into the possibility to see if we have any FEMA money available. It may be more difficult to get funding from FEMA. They seem to be focused on costs due to possible shutdown and then reopening and the disinfectant costs that go with that process, rather than just the opening of schools. But what I learned today during one of the calls with FEMA is that if you don't try to put in a request, you don't know if you'll get the funding. So we are planning on going through that process to see if we can get any funding at all.
But Sherri, the two buses are in fact on Ms. Lee's list of items that will be identifying with the towns. At this point, it's a matter of then prioritizing potentially additional funds and/or do we want to use the money elsewhere?
Ms. Baron?
And the TECA money for our students that are...
Yes, so those are also on our watch list, meaning I'm aggregating the costs as we speak. Unfortunately, it's a manual process, so I have a spreadsheet where I'm tracking the expenditures. So we know that the cost for the fall is approximately $300,000, and that we'd potentially be looking at the same kind of cost for the spring. So we're projecting for $600 and change for those remote learning costs. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? I know there's FY20, but...
We kind of rolled from 2021.
I think it would be fair for the committee, I know we have another meeting in September, but maybe for the October meeting, if we could just have a breakdown of the thought of these additional expenses and then the offset from a CARES perspective, so that way we can look at from a budgetary what that is, so just to articulate, so just to provide more clarity around that list.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to do that. And, you know, because the estimates are changing and our funding sources are changing, we will try to keep that updated as much as possible as well.
Any other information for FY21?
The only thing I just wanted to note in FY21 is that the revenue collected of approximately $3.1 million year-to-date approximates those when compared to the same timeframe as last year. And same with the expenditures of $4.2 million, when I looked at the same time period last year, they approximate the prior year. The encumbrances that you're seeing on the report include any commitments of expenditures as well as committed salaries. There is currently $13.2 million not yet committed and available to spend.
Any other questions on FY21? Seeing none, 6C, reopening schools update.
Yes, I could spend about four hours. No, I just, I tried to give a brief summary. You referenced a little bit in relation, I'll try to get some kind of frequently asked questions and maybe some topics that might come up and certainly then open it up to the board a little bit. I did provide you kind of a wealth of information, your packet referencing what the most recent state numbers are relative to COVID cases in both Freetown and Lakeville. You did see there was a slight increase relative to where we fit into the category. Still falls well within what our model is as it relates to in-person instruction for our students. I do want to just reference the fact that we're tweaking some of our bus routes and new bus, updated bus routes will be coming out hopefully tomorrow. There'll be minor adjustments that we had to make relative to the regulations and requirements of only having 24 students on a bus. We had to make those adjustments after all, obviously, all our homeschooling students were finalized. All our remote learning TECA students were put in place and certainly some other decisions relative to families and driving and so forth. So that will come out. Desi does have a kind of an opening welcome message. I'm going to include my superintendent's call this week from the commissioner. As you know, athletics, we made a determination that we're going to defer the decision relative to fall athletics for our student athletes, consistent with the South Coast Conference. And we're certainly hopeful that we'll have a season relative to those, for those students we are looking at hopefully kicking off the winter season. So I know there's been some conversation or at least some, at least community concern relative to the kind of default season. There are a couple of options that the upon-acquitted students, along with the South Coast Conference, athletic directors and principals are going to explore. And it doesn't necessarily have to fall into that February-April timeline to get the sports accomplished. There's a couple of ways to do that, but it is certainly our attempt and we feel we can do it in a much more productive way to allow our students some flexibility to compete by deferring the decision on fall, the fall sports consistent with South Coast. As far as the TECA piece or the remote piece, which I know has, certainly has Dr. Koblenzke and myself been engaged, most of our students started the TECA process today. Actually, the process for students' remote learning, we had just under 250 students properly registered by us through the district, so they remain our district students. I think the number in my last superintendent's call was 238. There's been a couple of adjustments, one either way, on elementary, middle school, high school. Those bundles have gone through. Kara referenced the fact that we're talking about a $303,000 commitment for those students relative to their remote learning. They've committed for a semester. There have been some logistical issues relative to getting the students. We did our part to register them. And quite frankly, there are a lot of districts that didn't get right on board with TECA and have lost out, didn't even have the opportunity. But we have been communicating with families and actually, based on our conversations today, Pat, Renee, myself, relative to families, it does appear that not only have all the students been registered, but they're just in the process of being assigned usernames and passwords and will start up the process. Again, these are, quote, "our students" who have chosen not to follow our hybrid model, which is 90% of our kids, but that just under 9% that chose to start off the year in a full remote piece. Again, I won't go into too much of the detail unless you have specific questions. It varied in, you know, the high school programs obviously differ than the elementary bundle relative to K to 8 and then some leveling placement that had to take place. We do have coordinators assigned at all three levels for the district. Mike Ward, the principal, is the elementary coordinator. Mr. Higgins, the middle school principal, is the middle school coordinator, although I know guidance has taken on that responsibility. And at the high school, I believe it is the department head, Nicole Graff, who is handling that responsibility as kind of the district contact. Again, these students remain ours. Homeschooling students don't. They withdraw from the district. So it's a smaller percentage, and I did highlight that. So I do know that, you know, probably at your level, from social media and so forth, there's been some issues relative to getting these kids to kickstart it. It really wasn't quite candidly on our end from a district perspective. We had sent all our bundles and all our students, we attempted to have them registered last week, which was a pretty efficient, timely piece. They were just in the process of finalizing some of those registrations. Keep in mind, our kids technically start next Tuesday, the 15th. The TECA students get a kickstart and get a week in advance of that in relation to their programs. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, whether it be athletics, whether it be bus routes, whether it be, you know, some of the things. There's been a lot of correspondence going out at the school level from principals, and I know you did see the middle school and high school piece. I can tell you that a sneak preview, the elementary schools, intermediate school, FES and AES will be providing for their parents similar type of documents in relation to what the parents, family, and students can expect to see in the hybrid model as it relates to not only in-person instruction, but remote learning. So I think, I'll stop there and maybe open it up for questions, Mr. Owen, Mrs. Fox, and maybe those questions will generate some things and concerns maybe the community might have.
Mr. Sinkowitz?
Yeah, just a question and a comment. So Rick, would you say that the, I'm not going to call it a ball being dropped, but I think the delay and some of the concerns we're hearing from parents related to those, getting those kiddos started in TECA, it's pretty much a registration kind of protocol on their end and their procedures as far as getting kids enrolled?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment. I'll say it's multiple things. I will say, in some instances, families dragged their feet in completing the process to get them, and so we kind of expanded what was the deadline and we actually created a waiting list, an unofficial waiting list, and made every effort to accommodate some additional families. But it was a really logistical registration piece on TECA's. They had the names of our students, they had the addresses, they had the SASED numbers. It was a matter of them inputting them into their program and kickstarting their classes.
So, and I guess, I guess just my statement, just seeing $330,000 just kind of go out of the district with these kids, which is certainly their right. My hope is that with Freetown-Lakeville moving forward, if this ever happens again, that we've boosted our remote capabilities to be able to keep these kids in district for a myriad of reasons, right? The fact that the budget kind of hit that we're taking with it, certainly understandable and parents certainly have their choice to be able to do that. But for me, like I said, I stated it again at the last meeting, I don't think there are any other teachers that I'd rather have our kids in front of than our teachers here in Freetown-Lakeville. So it breaks my heart a little bit seeing the money go out the door, but also our kids sitting in front of a TECA instructor, who I would bet the world, nothing against the program, but that they wouldn't get the love and affection and care that our teachers would give them. So I guess my challenge for folks is if we find ourselves here again, that we're really strategic in a way to try to figure out how we can keep those kids in district and still provide them with a remote experience.
So I hear you loud and clear. If you look at the state, and I don't necessarily disagree with everything you've shared, but I just want to point out, we kind of took a collaborative approach to this. The state didn't really release any of their remote platforms till mid-August, so we had a pretty quick turnaround. When you consider that a $303,000 bill in comparison to assigning, and I'll just, you could do the math. If you take the average teacher salary of $70,000, do that per grade. So assign one remote teacher per grade for grades K1, 2, 3, 4, 5. $350,000 there, one teacher. At the middle school and high school, much more complex. It would require a myriad of teams and teachers. The financial impact would be dramatically. So when I say we took a collaborative approach, when you have a small population number, and I would consider 9% a small population, you're trying to meet the needs and we feel we've done that. Mr. Stankwitz, his point is well taken. I think, given more time, we could potentially look at this. I have encouraged families. I actually think our, no offense, I think TECA will do a phenomenal job with those kids in a full remote capacity. They've been doing this for 17 years, right, at the state level? But I'm very excited about the robust nature of our remote learning and what we're going to roll out in the hybrid model. And I think moving down the line, obviously, I don't think remote learning is going away, right? I think education is going to be part of that. I think, given the timeframe, we can certainly look to other models, hopefully learn from this experience, hopefully the kids are successful, we can make them transition back in. I don't really disagree with much of what Mr. Stankwitz said, I'll be honest with you. I just want to kind of point out the context of that. It seems like a large dollar amount when you consider that our average per pupil expenditure is maybe $13,000. We're spending a semester, $1,200, you know, for that and obviously if they stay for a second semester, a full year. I think it was, from my perspective, the right strategy to meet the needs of our kids in the timeframe that we had. But there is no doubt, I'll take our teachers any day. The good piece is these kids remain our students. We can oversee the program, we can monitor to be sure that they're progressing successfully and hopefully making a transition back to us in person and/or a combination in the real near future. But it's certainly something I know you guys are seeing both in social media and throughout relative to concerns people are having. It was a logistical piece relative to registration. You know, I got to give my director of curriculum instruction, Pat Koblenzke, inherited a lot of the circumstances and contacts and, you know, that's part of that control piece that Will references, that you lose a little bit though when you kind of secure a third party to kind of run that piece. They remained ours, but we didn't necessarily have the full ownership in relation to getting the program up and running. But I would say most of the families, most of the families have listened to the three words that I've talked about, which is to be patient, be respectful, and provide some flexibility. But I know they're anxious to get their kids back into school and get started and we really did everything in our powers to target this today, as a matter of fact, to kickstart it, which is actually a week prior to our kids coming in. The TECA program actually started September 1st for those students that are registered with them, not with us. So those are some of the complications that led to, I think, some of the information that you might have heard. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, though.
Well, I think challenges in the first two weeks of school is not uncommon, whether you're here in the district or homeschooling or what have you. They are still our students. I know there's still a number of families that are having issues. What is the right process? Should they, should be reaching out to Dr. Koblenzke?
So they should be, there's a coordinator at each of the levels. And so if they do reach out to Dr. Koblenzke or myself, we'll forward that information. We do actually have a contact, a tech support, if it's a technology piece, which in a lot of instances it is, is actually securing their username and password, the logistics, to what Mr. Stankwitz said. But our office will defer to those, either the elementary coordinator, middle school coordinator, or high school coordinator, and we've got some contact information, Renee. My assistant even has that information. So TECA has provided us some updated information relative to numbers. If that information is forwarded to us, we'll forward to the appropriate people.
That should be going out today to families that we did finally hear from TECA and they're sharing resources with family as well as tech support, contact information for families, which is what we've been waiting for and looking for because the problems that were happening were not problems we could solve. We had sent everything, so...
But there are contacts within our district that parents can follow up with.
Well, those contacts are actually going to send out, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong. I think our plan was to get it out to those families so they know who to reach out to.
Yes, exactly, so that they can deal directly with TECA now and there's some tips for them. There's a whole cadre of links now coming out of TECA. So I think families should feel pretty supported moving forward.
Excellent, to try and fix that. And then, is there a timetable, you know, I know this is a pretty scary thought, but January 25th is going to be here before we know it. I'd hate for a message to go out January 20th that says, "What's your plan?" Do we have a timetable as far as going out to those 240 families and see what their intentions are for the second semester?
We have not identified a timeline at this point. My hope would be that we're already in full, in person at that point and certainly will be attempting to secure those students to come back to us. But I think it's a little early, but to your point, we absolutely cannot wait until January to make that determination. I'll keep you updated though relative to that timeline. Certainly my hope, and based on the progress that I've seen to date, that we're in a good place with half our students and we can see more and more of our students come back in person, including those students.
Any other questions related to TECA? We'll open it up to the reopening. Any questions on the reopening?
I want to talk about TECA. Do I have to wait?
Typically, it is during public participation. Was there anything? I think a lot of what the concerns were, especially with your, you had sent an email earlier, have been addressed. Is there anything different than what was?
No, I still have plenty of stuff. So when should that be addressed?
And so I think the best thing would be, Dr. Koblenzke, there is a contact that would have this information. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I, can I have you connect with her after this meeting to get that contact to get to these questions here? Because I don't think we're going to have those answers that's going to come from the coordinator at the respective school.
No, these are all just dates on when contact was made with TECA. How was the date determined on when we would start with TECA? This should be something that we could discuss now. You know, it's been floated around that September 15th has been the date for people to come back hybrid, but just September 2nd was when I got the date for my son, that he would start September 9. So how come we weren't told about when we would start with TECA? This is just little things that have come up, that this is ridiculous.
So I totally understand your piece in that case, as far as timelines.
I was running late, but public participation should happen at any point in time.
It is, is not, but I will say that your questions...
I'll certainly come back next meeting and make sure I'm here like 20 minutes early so I can participate.
No, no offense here. We just, we think that you can have a better luck.
No, this needs to be discussed. The fact that all this stuff has like been not put out to families, things that in emails could have been done so we would have the information we had. When did TECA get our names? Was it three days before this day today? I still don't have any longer information. My start date was supposed to be today. If the families showed up on September 15th and the doors were locked and the teachers were not here, would nobody be upset? I highly doubt it. You know, my small percentage of people, it's ridiculous we're being treated like this.
I will say, as Mr. Maderas mentioned earlier and as well as several meetings, TECA was distributed by the state, I believe, the third week of August in that case. There have been many communication items and many things could have been more timely. We don't disagree. There was a short turnaround from the state. There's a short turnaround that the district had to work with TECA. There was a short turnaround that parents had to give us feedback, when I say "us," the district, as far as their intention. As Mr. Maderas said earlier, outside of public participation, that was also extended to give parents more time to make that decision. We understand that there have been some issues, which is what Mr. Sinkowitz had brought up and what was... If you'd like to continue, you can come to the microphone.
I can't hear you.
I'm not saying it's okay, ma'am.
Everybody's blaming everybody else, but the fact is, is that, you know, things should be done in a timely manner, okay? Same thing with the state. The state should put things out way before this to have things done, okay? But when did TECA get our names? That's what I want to know. What's that date?
We should be able to give that. Do we know?
So, so a couple of dates.
Did TECA say to somebody, "Oh, we need a week to set you guys up and we only gave them three days"? Somebody must have dates here.
So after this, well, I can give you a couple of, I can give you several updates. So first of all, the state did not provide a platform till mid-August.
What day did you get the email from the state?
Well, if you allow me to answer the question, I'd be happy to answer the question. If you don't want me to answer.
We'll give you the opportunity to respond here. I know that you're upset, but we got to give the opportunity for people to respond as well.
We sent out a survey for one week. It was a short turnaround. There is no doubt. Time was not on our side in relation to allowing. In fact, if I...
Ms. Bissette, I'm going to ask that you please hold, allow him to respond.
So August 24th, the survey was distributed. In fact, Mrs. Fox specifically shared with me and I think probably spoke on, we have a lot of boards, and said, "Boy, it's an aggressive timeline." And I didn't necessarily disagree with her at that point, except I also knew that we had a very short window to turn this around. So the survey went from the 29th, I believe, to the 24th to the 29th. At that point, we were still securing, so it was the following week that we then in bulk fashion submitted all of those names. At that point, we were still securing. So it was the following week that we then in bulk fashion submitted all of those names. We then expected and hoped that TECA would input those names. We had about a week to do that. Meaning to get the information to them for two hundred and forty families and then have them input that. And that basically leads us to where we're at. I mean, today is September ninth. I mean, school is the Sept- September fifteenth for our students. These students are our students. We aggressively looked on September first and second and communicated to parents that we were gonna make every effort to see if we could start on September ninth. And we have done that for the vast majority of the kids. I, I, I have to tell you, and, and you can respectfully disagree, the people that work behind the scenes have worked tirelessly in this district to provide a venue, a remote learning platform, which is a model for the state in a short timeframe. Most school districts did not secure the arrangement that we are, that we got with TECA. They waited and as a result, did not even have the ability to have their kids in. So I respectfully disagree that in fact, we have dropped the ball in relation to any of what we're doing. I get that it's frustrating in relation to having your students pre-provided the username and password. We don't have control over that. We now have some directions and specifics from TECA on that. I'd be happy to offline speak to any of the families. I have, I, I can check my email right now. I have not failed to respond to a text, a phone call, or an email that comes, that's come through my office for the last ten days since this process happened. Including Monday during Labor Day, speaking to families from my office in relation to how concerned they were. But I did not have the ability to have TECA working for me on the holiday. We needed to wait till they came back on Tuesday, which was yesterday. And, and they, their last memo was between forty, twenty-four and forty-eight hours, all of your students who are properly registered, Superintendent Maderas. Um, would be notified with usernames and passwords, twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours. And that was yesterday. So we're still within the window that TECA has provided. I understand it's frustrating. That's the best information I can share and um, I, I.
I'll let you come on.
That's a lot more words than I need. When did we give TECA the names to the students? How long did they have to put this information in the system? It's an easy question. I want a date. I mean, did they have three days? Did they have a week? I can understand if they only had three days. This is why we're going through this. But there's no reason why this is happening. There's no reason. The email got sent out with the, with the options. Yes, you gave people a week to respond. The email did not say, do not contact TECA. We will do it for you. That produced a lot of anxiety and a lot of stress on parents because they were trying to enroll their children. These are things that are happening.
But that did, that's not what the survey said, ma'am. The survey simply said, if you, if you're choosing that piece, we provided the TECA link and families anxiously went directly to TECA. That's not what the instructions said.
Say, we will, we will enroll your child. Show me the email and show me where, where it says, we will enroll your child. Because otherwise we have to assume it's up to us. Correct? If it's not stated, how are we supposed to know?
I, I'll go back to my superintendent's corner that pointed that out.
It's not there. It's not in the survey email. Secondly, when it was decided through online media that we didn't have to go through TECA, an email should have been sent out to all, the whole district, saying that we didn't have to do it. We're getting piece information through on, through online, through social media. This should not happen if.
Ma'am, you're talking about one week timeframe though.
He gets to say something, but in, interrupt me, but I can't interrupt him.
We'll allow you to speak. Go ahead.
So how is this okay that we're getting the information from social media on we don't have to enroll our children, that it'll be taken care of? How is that okay? An email should go out. Same thing with the start date. Who picked the start date of September eighth? TECA? You guys? Who did it? And if we chose it, why did we? Why couldn't we give our families more time? We don't even know what the TECA platform is. People are logging in. They're saying that, they're showing that they're behind. They don't know their teachers. They don't even know how to go and look at things. They have things to read. They have things to go over. We know if we send our child to school, they're gonna go into school from nine to three. The teachers will take care of them. We don't know what's going on with TECA. We don't know how TECA works. This is all information that could have, you guys could have gotten from TECA and sent out to families. The correspondence is ridiculous and that's my main concern. I get technology issues. I get it. But give people proper time, give them the information they need, send the information out to the families because the fact that I'm here today is really upsetting to me. And I don't, just because I'm a small percentage and I can't stand that everybody keeps saying that, a small percentage. That's ridiculous. We should all be treated equally. And those are my problems. I want dates. When the state said to you, you need a remote option and it's gonna be TECA? When we contacted TECA, when we gave them the information, those are the dates we need to see where the ball was dropped. And it's not okay the ball was dropped. It's not okay at all.
Do we have the data when the two hundred and forty was submitted to TECA?
They were submo- submitted last Wednesday and Thursday. TECA assured us they need, only needed twenty-four to forty-eight hours to enroll and that this would not be a problem. Once TECA ran into a problem, it had nothing to do with us, nor could we have in any way, shape or form fixed that problem.
But that's something that should have been sent out to the families.
We did send out a one call on Friday afternoon saying that TECA had run into some technical difficulties with their enrollment. They assured us that they would get on it and that we would have information for families and families would be fully enrolled by Wednesday of this week.
I did not receive a one call and I usually receive one calls.
I did receive the phone call. I do understand completely your frustration. I don't see, especially being on this committee, that we dropped the ball. Again, I do have two children that are enrolled in TECA. I am going through the same login. I, I was at the superintendent's office the other day. I have a, a Megan Blum and a Miguel Blum. And that's neither one of my children's names. I have two boys and I have a Megan. I called TECA, they couldn't help me. The school has done what they need to do though, to try to square all that away. It had nothing to do with us.
Absolutely. Every, every single scenario, the school has done everything they can. Correspondence wise, dates wise.
I personally am, am very happy that we even have an option that our children are still enrolled in the district.
Okay, the fact that that's even thrown out there is ridiculous to me to say, oh, well, we're, sorry, we're screwing this up, but at least you have an option. That's ridiculous. Why on September second am I being told that my student's gonna start on September eighth? Why is that such a short timeframe?
And you can go back to the August twenty-sixth meeting because this was discussed quite at length.
That it would be September eighth?
Please allow me to finish. It was talked about the fact that our students will not be starting till the fifteenth and TECA wanted us to start on the first. The district, both Mr. Maderas and Dr. Kablinsky said that we've negotiated a September ninth. So long before any of this. Now, we can go back and forth whether it should have been posted on social media, but this is not something that.
I wasn't asking for social media posts. I'm saying that's where I'm getting my information from because I'm not getting emails from my, my principal. I'm just not.
So, and I know, I have posted several times on social media that there is plenty of information being sent out through the one call. You should reach out to your schools and make sure that your email, even if it's more than one. Because there are several families that have that similar situation, that they're not getting the messages. But I can tell you, some of your bullet points that you raised, if they were not discussed, I would agree with you. But September eighth was not something that was talked about just September seventh, September fifth. This was something talked about long before that. And I know there's a lot of frustrations and there're gonna be, continue to be a lot of frustration. I understand that. But if you're not getting the emails, my suggestion would be connect with the contact from Dr. Kablinsky to make sure they have the right one that's going to you because they are being sent from, we're hearing from other resources. And two, to help address the login issue that, that's happened. Not that you having an issue with logging in, you just don't have the information. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I think that, Dr. Kablinsky, if you can spend a few minutes and make sure that we get that contact to her so we can get that resolved, even though TECA says that that should be resolved by tomorrow. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
But I, I do have to disagree with some of your bullet points. This has been communicated. We could probably discuss differences as far as what the right medium was gonna be. But the superintendent is ver- very clear that the communication is gonna come across via email and that we as parents need to make sure that our email is up to date to make sure we're getting that.
So you're trying to suggest that I'm not an up-to-date parent who takes care of my things and things like that?
I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just saying that you are making a statement that this is not.
Parents that haven't been getting emails, haven't been getting one calls. We're a small percentage. We should not be scrambling, wondering what the heck is going on. And for everybody to say you, you didn't drop the ball, that's just ridiculous to me.
We're not saying we're not to drop. I've made a suggestion as far as next steps. We can sit there and go back and forth in that particular case.
So what happens when my son logs in and then he sees that all of these assignments are due? What does he do then? What do we do then? How do we catch up? Parents have been calling TECA. TECA has been telling them to call the, contact the district.
I, I, I've given a suggestion. I, I, I know you're not happy about that, but I don't know what else you would like for me to say. Dr. Kablinsky, can you please confirm with myself and Ms. Fox that they communication back to us, update to that aspect of it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I have information to share right now. Before we leave, I'll make sure that she has it.
Go back to the board. Any other questions on the reopening of schools? Mr. President.
Not a question. It's actually a, a statement. So I know a number of us toured the schools today um, to see the health and the safety issues and everything that had been put in place. Um, I toured one of the elementary schools. It was extremely impressive. Not only was the school so clean that you could practically eat off the floor. Um, there was signage everywhere. The classrooms were bright and cheery. There were teachers working very hard at the, the time that we went in late this afternoon. Um, it was very impressive. I think we need to give a giant kudos to administration and to our entire staff for what they have done for the last week and a half. You know, everybody wants everything yesterday and I, I'm not talking about TECA whatsoever, Mrs. Bissette, but we get, every one of us is getting multiple emails every single day and unfortunately, most of them are not complimentary. But if you go in and you see what has been going on for the last couple of weeks, you know, our teachers deserve their, so did our administrators for that matter, their summer. Our administrators didn't get it. We understand that. Our teachers didn't get much of it either. But that being said, we couldn't just bring everybody in three months ago and say, okay, this is what you're gonna do all summer. So they've done yeoman's work in the last week and a half as far as I could see. I know that one of the other problems that's out there, Mrs. Bissette, is the fact that elementary folks wanna see what the remote week is going to look like. Over and over and over again, we get questions about what's it gonna look like? And the committee doesn't know what it's gonna look like either. But it's going to come out. I spoke to Mrs. Penall today. She said it would be coming out either the end of next, this week or early of next week. They are still working on it. They're still doing their professional development. She was quite excited. She made it very clear that teachers are going to be seeing their remote students. Um, we had a long chat about that. So any, any parent that is concerned that they're gonna be out there for a week all by themselves, that's just not going to happen. Um, but as um, Mr. Maderas keeps saying, patience is the key here. And I think we've all, and I, and I have lost patience sometimes too. I think we've all lost patience at this point. This has been a horrendous task. The nobe- as I said to um, somebody today, there's no manual here. Let's find a source. Let's find a resource. Let's see what we can, let's study this. There isn't any study. Every single school district in this state and probably in this country is working really, really hard to put this thing together for the best opportunities that we can have for our students. And so the patience part of it, I get it. It's wearing thin on me too. As I said to my husband just yesterday, I don't even like myself anymore because I don't feel as though we're happy and we're smiling. Everything is bombarding us daily from the time I get up in the morning until we go to bed at night. And Mr. Maderas, I don't know quite how he is doing what he's doing and still smiling once in a while through it. So I don't want to keep going on, but I do want to make sure that people understand that it's coming. You know, one of the things that Lakeville Free Town does very well is that we show, and we have for forty years that I can say, is that we give lots of information way in advance. Teacher assignments, two weeks in advance and all the rest. And you know what? People have got used to that, including me. And they don't like the fact that we have to wait now because things are just different. So we just have to all kind of hold on tight. And as far as uh, Steve is concerned here, I'm listening to the um, governor today who said that out of fifty states, we are number two in how well we are doing. So my hope is, and if anybody wants to put any pressure, that we put it on the governor and the commissioner to let the districts open up that they can. Let's bring our kids back. Let's bring them back from TECA. Let's bring them back from homeschool. Let's get back to normal, to full, full speed, everybody back to normal. So let's kind of put the pressure somewhere else other than on our, our staff and our administration. Sorry I went on so long, Rick.
Any other questions? Mr. Maderas, just a couple of different, um, the letter from the food service. Um, I think there was some confusion about the process we're undertaking about whether all students. Um, and I know that's an application we're doing. We don't have the final word. Is that correct?
That's correct. And there is some additional information on the website. Again, you know, Sherry makes a, 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 a point that relates to food service. There's so much that's not consistent with our timelines in the past and I think that's the real frustration we all feel. And superintendents live on structured schedules. Teachers live on class lists and bus routes and, and food ser- so we're, we're waiting for, you know, federal guidance on whether the applications and waiver goes through for food service so we can then let families know kind of where they're at in relation to that piece. I mean, keep in mind, folks, it's been about a hundred and eighty-eight days since our kids have been in school. Six months it's been for some, you know, for, for our kids. March. That's a long time. I am very excited about our kids coming back next week. Um, but, but to the point of this piece, a- as soon as we're getting information, and I know it's not timely. You know, we, Pat hit it right on. We did a survey for five days. The Tuesday, Wednesday, which was September third and four, second and third, we sent it. We targeted the ninth. That's a very aggressive timeline to produce schedules and registration and, and for kids with multiple piece. And we did it for most of those families successfully. And it's frustrating. And I know because I get the calls with the frustrated people, right? You, you don't usually call. I think we all do it, myself included. You're not calling me on Monday afternoon on Labor Day, right, and saying, Mr. Bissette, just wanted to let you know, everything's going well at my house. I have a cookout planned. I've registered my kid. I don't mean to be sarcastic, right? They're calling me saying, I can't get in. What are you gonna do about this? Or I can't access that. So again, I do appreciate the board's support. Sherry referenced it, Steve, we had multiple school committee members. Not only did you see facilities being taken care of, but in almost every one of those buildings, late in the afternoon and early evening, you saw staff members still getting their classrooms ready, custodial staff working. We are working endlessly. I can't wait for the day where all of our kids come back in person. And we certainly hope that the politics don't dictate that, that it's done properly and we open successfully and I'm excited about that. But the food service, Steve, I'm sorry to raise, raise your point in each of those. You'll see updates on the websites. They're already there for a lot of parents and families and I know it's, and I'll try to capture it in some of the superintendent's corner. I try to hit the frequently asked questions. Um, but, but continue to monitor that and take a look at those links because there's a wealth of information. For any of you that have multiple children, I, I feel bad because you're overwhelmed. I have, I have office staff, Renee, as I look across. If you have two children in this district and they're at multiple s- schools or grade levels, you're getting superintendent's updates with six documents attached, the calendar. You're getting principals with seven and eight page documents. It's an overwhelming task. Um, but it's the only way we can kind of keep you up to speed in what is a ridiculously fast pace right now as we are, we're opening up.
So again, not to dwindle on what we've accounted thus far. It hasn't been perfect. We understand that. If we can make sure that the rest of the two forty is addressed.
Oh, absolutely.
So that way we can get that checked out. That'd be great. And then the food service piece, it was just a confusion. It was just more the fact that the statement more than it is, but we're still in application process. So that's more to come on that piece.
That's correct.
And the breakfast program, is that gonna be open?
Yeah, will still be in place. That's correct.
Uh, I know last year we had FES, AES and GRAZE. Has that also moved up to the middle school?
I believe it is just, it, it remains at the three schools, the three elementary schools at this time.
All right. Um, my last piece is um, related to the personal protection letter that you have in here. One thi- One thing that probably needs to be clarified to the community because the, the building information is coming out about what protection there, but in this letter, it clearly dictates that gators will not be allowed. So we should probably just clarify even down at the building level, just so that way everybody's clear. As I'm showing by example here.
Yes, you are.
So, that's it. Any other questions on reopening of schools? We did a tour. All the buildings are. We've always sit there, and I think to steal Bob Clark's thunder, the campus looks great, the schools are clean, everything looks awesome. The projects that were completed over the summer look great. But as I said to the director of facilities, Mr. Goodwin, today, unfortunately, that awesome news is gonna be belittled because of the fact that we're working so hard to get them back into the school. Um, and I think Sherry's uh, comment is dead on. The teachers just came back. They're, they're trying to figure this whole thing out as well. Uh, so, and I, patience is gonna be a key thing because it's not just gonna stop on September fifteenth. There's gonna be more information throughout the month of September.
Mr. Owen, if I may add, in addition to the, the school committee tours, we will also be this week having our inspections with the fire department, the department, uh, the, the board of health and the building inspector, as we've always done, but obviously the significance of it even more so this year. So those, those inspections will also take place at all fire schools.
Ms. Bum.
And may I say, every teacher that I came in contact with today is extremely excited to have their students back in class. And I think that is very important. They're very eager to be there. They're so excited to have their students. They can't wait to meet their students, and I think that that's a very positive note.
All right. Um, moving on to seven A, new business staffing progress report.
Yeah, I, I did provide for the committee. There are twenty-eight names listed. There are actually not twenty-eight because several of them have, there are current staff members that took on new assignments, so they're not listed twenty-eight. Five, five of those names are long-term substitutes filling in for current leaves. Seven are new assignments. So technically, there were sixteen new additions to the, to the, to our Free Town Lakeville school community as, as new members of our district. And I just wanted, I typically provide this at the start of the school year. And to Sherry's point, typically, I'm able to do it a couple of weeks in advance, but everything kinda has moved together as, you know, to, to, to credit the committee. Keep in mind, you didn't have this meeting scheduled. This was an additional meeting to be sure that we provided one more venue. Um, the, the scheduled school committee meeting for September was supposed to be September twenty, twenty-third, and it was a conversation Mr. Owen had with me about making sure we had one more meeting. So it's just simply a staffing informational update for you at this time relative to our, to our positions.
From a budgetary perspective, are all positions, even the net new, have they been filled?
Um, we're still in the process. We received a resignation today uh, relative to a, a position. So um, two hours ago, I could have said yes. We are still looking to secure some part-time positions. Um, but we're in the process of attempting to secure a position that just became, was made aware of. As we were actually doing our tour, I received a call. So uh, it's not totally out of the norm rel, in relation to that, but we, we feel we can adequately meet the needs of all our kids relative to our staffing.
Okay. Um, any questions related to staffing? Seemed done. Seven B, updated school calendar.
So we had such a wonderful twenty twenty-one year. I'm making a proposal that we change the last day of school. That's the reason that this calendar is here. Um, we had to make an adjustment in the previously voted school committee calendar because it actually had a hundred and seventy-one school days, not a one hundred and seventy. So please look at the calendar at your place and reference the fact that the last day projected for twenty twenty-one is June, is now June seventeenth. You had previously voted on a calendar that had it as June twenty-first, which would have made it one additional school day. So I am recommending that the school committee uh, vote tonight the new uh, calendar, which has no changes to the hybrid model or anything that, like that, other than the date of June seventeenth as the last school day. Please note, we also have, have, have changed the five snow days which are required, but that may be a moot point by the time we get through the school year too with remote learning, right? It may not be necessary to have snow days. So it is certainly our intent that our last school day, hopefully full in person on June seventeenth um, is the date. So it's actually-
I will entertain a motion to accept the school calendar as presented on September ninth. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion?
Who got one seventy-one instead of one seventy?
To do that. We, I think so, there was some confusion when we took the-
Probably right now.
You took the, oh, no, I have to take the responsibility there. I think when we looked at, we were trying to add the PD, the ten days and the, and the change. It didn't get captured in there, but. Um, so corrected. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion is unanimous. I, I will call out if we can just update the website reference to highlight this particular date because it has changed quite a bit um, across the board. That'd be great. And then I will, to the community perspective, um, if you're a little bit colorblind like me, this is an awesome calendar, but uh, the cohort colors are done on purpose to allow for continuity, the same number of days, both in person and out. So I know as we get later on in November, December, it gets a little bit hairy. But based upon the way the holidays fall, one was having more in-person days versus the other, which is why the calendar is in its fashion. Is that correct?
Absolutely. It was an equity issue in relation to being sure we provide the same number of in-person instructional days.
Uh, reports to the committee. Anything additional, Ms. Lee?
Uh, yes, just one item. Um, in relation to the performance contracting capital project, we have closed and secured our funding of five million nine hundred and forty-six dollars and four, four oh three, sorry. Five million nine hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and three dollars on various energy upgrades. Uh, yesterday on September eighth, the first stage of the high school boiler plant replacement began, where the plan's demolition of the boiler plant was discussed with our contractor. The projected timeline for the boiler plant demolition and installation is for October fifteenth, two thousand twenty, where boiler number one at the high school will be left in verifiable service until the new boilers are operational to be sure the building has heat available for mid-October, uh, the start of the heating system.
Any questions from Ms. Lee's? Uh, this is, just to highlight this, for those that have not seen this, this is almost a six million dollar project, which the savings will pay for the project. So it is designed to have no operational impact to our budget, but really make some heavy capital of improvements at the three campus schools, which is a phenomenal task. So um, and I know a lot of work will be done in the next three months uh, from these energy improvements. At some point, um, I know we had at the, toward the end of the year, we had an outline of what the projects are included on that. If we could just get that and just almost a quick project plan status update, that'd be great.
Sure.
Okay. Um, Dr. Kuplinsky?
So teachers have completed seven days of professional development now. Um, three days of professional development was with ed tech teacher, and that was all technological pieces. Um, and they have just completed two days with the Highlander Institute, more on pedagogy. They have one more day tomorrow um, with the Highlander Institute. Yesterday from the Highlander, they learned about structures and systems for remote learning. Today, they talked about, uh, and got some lesson templates on how to create a hybrid model of in-class and remote learning. Um, last week's PD was very well received, um, and very informative. So I had done a survey more for information to guide as we're moving forward um, with this consulting group. Um, and you know, questions were asked like, um, this series of professional development activities increased my teaching skills for online learning. Ninety-eight percent agreed with that. I gained knowledge and skills to begin implementation of this professional development into my lessons. Ninety-seven percent agreed or strongly agreed. This professional development provided me with instructional strategies to engage my students in meeting rigorous online academic standards. Ninety-five percent agreed and strongly agreed with that. The strategies used by, by the presenter were appropriate in helping me attain the outcomes of this professional development experience. Ninety-eight percent agreed with that. The presenter is a former high school teacher, so he connected very, very well with our teachers and he knew his stuff, and they knew that he knew his stuff. He could answer any question that they logged at him. The presenter was knowledgeable and effective. Ninety-eight percent. This professional development enhanced my professional growth. Ninety-eight percent agreed strongly or, you know, agreed. The other question I asked was what PD topics would you like to see offered as we move forward? We have five half-days as we had said, and we have one full day coming up in November. And these were some of the examples of what they would like to see. Still more on Google Classroom, um, video editing, um, creating videos, that kind of thing, which is, which is a nice next step in progression once teachers haven't had an opportunity to practice some of this. And then there were just comments, some comments and reflections that I had, um, that I had shared with, with you. Um, Highlander is creating surveys after each session, and they're using the information from those surveys to determine what they're gonna address the next day. Um, and then they'll share with me all of the um, survey information. Once it's finished, then I'll also do my own survey so that I know what teachers wanted and, and what teachers thought of the process. Just to make sure that what we are doing is effective. Um, and then um, just as far as the online learning lessons licenses, I know we've talked quite a bit about it, but today, TECA did send out some information to us, uh, frequently asked questions for families and a link to a pre-recorded parent information video. Um, and then parent resources, some tips for families, um, a twenty-four-seven tech support line, and also a contact person at TECA that they can um, talk to. So this information went out via one call uh, this afternoon, early evening from all the district coordinators. So from Jack Higgins and um, Nicole Graff and Mike Ward. So families, if they haven't received their enrollment information yet, at least have somewhere to go now. And if they are struggling to log on or there are some issues um, technologically, there is a support number now that they can reach. Where before, we didn't have that information. And I know it was frustrating for everybody, us included. I mean, we were trying to reach out too to get these questions answered. I mean, Mr. Maderas and I, and, and Renee were on the phone twenty-four-seven just, and emailing, just trying to stay ahead because we knew families were upset and, and concerned. It's unfortunate that, you know, that's how it ended up because it, it was a good endeavor and it is, it was a good attempt on everybody's part to make sure that this was done in a timely manner and, and that we did have, that we were able to secure enough licenses for all of our families who felt that that was the best option for them and their children.
Mr. Owen, if I can just may add, I don't know if it can be, just to, to acknowledge um, Dr. Kuplinsky knocking it out of the park with this PD, that, that securing those, these ex, this expertise and the quality of the days. In addition, we obviously did some things relative to health and wellness and social, emotional, and certainly all the safety precautions and protocols. The vast majority she touched upon with ed tech and Highlander Institute, both connections that she made and secured for the district. Um, and for any of you, and I know many of you are educators, it is often challenging to do a PD that's relevant for high school people and that kindergarten, first grade teacher. In both instances, they've really done that. But I also think there's a real driving motivation behind our staff wanting to secure and provide um, the best product for our kids that are both in person, but also at home. And, and I'm, and I'm very, I think we all are. We're real excited. Yeah, if there's anything relative to that, and, and Jen, I appreciate you sharing that. I do think that, that we are all ready to take a deep breath and see some smiling faces with masks uh, from, from children uh, next week. So I, I just wanna make sure I, I note that, and Pat often with professional development, sometimes at the end of the school committee meeting, it gets lost, right? We've, we've, that, we've been sitting for two or two and a half hours. In this instance, it is really leading where we need to be as a district, and uh, I just wanna commend her and all the support staff for pulling this together.
Thank you.
And there's much more to come in, in September. So, so any other questions for?
One quick question. I, I was reading through the comments. Um, so it was information overload for some people, is it, right? Obviously. I mean, that's to be expected.
In time for them to be able to absorb this and work with it. Um, even this week with the Highlander piece. Highlander is in the morning, and then the teachers have the afternoon to work and absorb, come back at them in the morning. So I think that's a nice um, model for them to have some time to absorb because it was just coming at them fast and furious. And for some people, they got it.
Yep.
Okay, great. But for others, I mean, I would have been completely overwhelmed. It's not, it's really not my forte.
No, it's exciting. It's exciting to be given tools that you can utilize after what we had to go through last spring to know that you can really operate in an efficient and productive manner. But I do get it, and I'm reading the comments, and while they're positive, and Greg was obviously awesome.
Yeah, oh yeah.
They, they, I just wanted to follow up and make sure that if anyone feels that, you know, they're, they're under this crushing weight of information, that we have a way to deal with that.
Yes, and, and I've had conversations and have sent emails out to staff just to, just to talk to them about, let's just take this one step at a time. You've got a lot of information. Greg gave them some good tips on how to pick and choose the things that they thought they could do right now.
Oh, good.
And then the things that they think down the line that they can do, and, and we'll layer it. This isn't a one-shot deal. These people are gonna be here all year long. Um, and they have provided all kinds of um, technical support, videos that they've left behind with us so that teachers can again revisit it as they're working through it.
And I think, I, I think everyone just assumes this and knows this. I mean, this was a remote model. I mean, well, it's exciting. All our teachers came back to work. They worked from their workplace, so they worked from their classrooms and are in cohorts of teams and connected through this remote vehicle very successfully. And certainly, I know many of you in your private, you know, in your other jobs are doing that as well and seeing that happen across the board, but it was done successfully. In fact, we learned a lot for future PD relative to the fact that sometimes we, we spend a lot of time pulling everybody together in a location and realize that if we just let some of our classroom teachers, for example, I heard this, and I know Pat did as well from principals and curriculum leaders, if people were just, you know, allowed to go back into their classroom and connect, and that way they could really accomplish so much more, and, and I think it's a a good learning experience for us. But um, you know, so our teachers are back. I keep talking about the kids being back. Our teachers came back last week, right? So in my seven years, August thirty-first, earliest start for staff in Free Town Lakeville um, back to school. And um, I, I, I think they've certainly benefited from that. You saw some of those comments and um, we're trying to, to Jean's point, you're right, keep that anxiety level because there, there is so much coming at them as well, but we're excited about the potential.
Dr. Kuplinsky, thank you for this information. At some point, um, I don't know what the right timeframe is. I'd like to understand the plan of bringing our kids back and how we need to get them caught up, right? It is a valid point as far as what we need to do, especially the different grade levels. And I'm assuming there's some account management through TECA to give us feedback as far as how students are progressing so that way we can try and accommodate them elsewhere. Because I know their curriculum's a little bit different than what we are doing in our district.
Right. They are following the mass frameworks, and they will create grades and report cards for us and also progress reports. Our coordinators can also track and see how our kids are doing. So when they do come back to us, none of this should be a surprise.
Great. Thank you. Anything else for Dr. Kuplinsky? Ms. Curlin?
Thank you. So as we prepared to reopen our um, our classrooms for our special education students, we had a comprehensive professional development on Friday, which included the special, all the special education teaching staff, related service providers, school psychologists, adjustment counselors, and guidance counselors. Um, I also had several teachers and specific to pre-K Q and A Zooms for them so that they're very comfortable around um, our plans for the fall, which in, in summary is, is, includes the following. So over the next um, two weeks, the special education liaisons will be calling families to conference with them. Um, they're gonna hear about the remote learning plant, remote learning um, time for the student and also discuss the schedule for remote learning with them. Following the conferencing, there is going to be, each individual child is gonna get an individualized learning plan um, to cover this um, hybrid timeframe, if you will. Um, as if that wasn't plenty enough work to do, so we have staggered that our last, um, our final leg in the reopening process. Starting the week of October thirteenth, the district will start convening COVID-nineteen related compensatory services um, meetings, which is going to discuss um, some of what you just said, Mr. Owen. Um, and that will, that will take us some time, obviously, to um, to complete- to, to complete that process. Additionally, the, in the fall, the teachers liaisons are going to be working on our initials and reevals from the fall and also maintain all of our current timelines, which will kick in when we reopen on September fifteenth. I'd like to report that we have, for a week and a half, we have been bringing students in for psychological evaluations by appointment through the school psychologist, and that has been going very well. It was well received, and things have been going very smoothly. And lastly, for reopening, I just wanted to make a note that Free Town Lakeville has been able to offer in-person instruction for each and every student on the high-needs subcategory, so not just special education. And not all of the surrounding districts have been able to do that, so it is a big kudos to us and all of our planning that we're able to make that offer by configuring and spacing and whatnot. And lastly, we, I just noted the next CPAC meeting, which is going to be October sixth at six thirty.
Any questions for Ms. Curlin? Any subcommittee updates? I know there's been a, an additional meeting to this, but any subcommittee updates?
I don't have any update. I just know from the chair, if in fact you wanted to address the MOA under subcommittee, under subcommittee at this time. That would be probably a good placeholder to do that.
Yes, because a part of the negotiation committee. The, I will entertain a motion to accept the MOA with page one and two as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, one point is, thank you, Mr. Sankwitz, for your hard work, working with Mr. Medeiris and making sure we get this done.
Yes, not many districts have this in place, so I think a collaborative effort on both sides, especially by the teachers. Any other discussion points? Seeing nine, can we just do a quick roll call?
You, Owen?
Yes.
Jean Fox?
Yes.
Sherry Barron?
Yes.
Jennifer Blum?
Hi.
Robert Clark?
Hi.
Laura Ramsen?
Yes.
Will Sankwitz?
Yes.
Even Zilia?
Yes.
The motion is unanimous. Any other business come before this meeting? We do have some upcoming dates. Probably most important is the first day of school for that. I will reiterate some of the words that Mr. Medeiris, as far as patience and flexibility and most often respect, and that has to go both ways. We're not going to be all happy with the decisions. I think we have to come to that. There's a lot of moving parts, and there's more information coming on a daily basis. So, please make sure the communication is there. Please make sure you reach out to the schools. They've been very good about that. So, I wish the teachers and the administration all the best on Tuesday morning, and especially the students. I know there are several that are excited and anxious at the same time for that, so. It is seven forty-five. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.